The City Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, June 10th. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing. Sir?
Shall we pray? First of all, Lord, I want to thank you and praise you for our leaders willing to shoulder the weight of responsibility of the care of our community. But right now, we also want to pray for a city much like our own, Troutdale, Oregon. Another school shooting. Lord, please have mercy on that community. And so we please also pray to spare our city this kind of grief and protect us all, as it says in the Lord's Prayer, to please deliver us from evil. Now, Lord, look upon these proceedings with divine favor. Grant a spirit of wisdom, innovation, vision, and respectful consideration and cooperation as these public servants consider important matters that face the city of Riverbank. May we gladly acknowledge and accept your help in all these things, for we pray in your matchless name. Amen.
Please be seated. Thank you. Roll call.
Council Authority member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. I have a conflict on item 3G in the consent calendar.
I have a conflict on item 3G as well.
And I do too. Item 3G.
Mayor members of the city council, for benefit of the public, on that item, we will pull that from the consent calendar, and the city clerk will ask you to pull coins, and for each of those of you who live in the Crossroads, Lighting, and Landscaping District. And then the person with the highest number on their coin is the one that will remain at the dais to vote on that item so it can be moved forward, and the other two members will be asked to step off the dais into the adjacent room for the duration of the proceedings.
Thank you. Item 1. Item 1.1, conveyance update.
Yes. Mayor members of the city council, it's my pleasure to introduce Debbie Olson, the executive director of the Local Redevelopment Authority and the executive director of the Riverbank Industrial Complex, as we more frequently refer to it at this time, for an update on the conveyance proceeding, as well as an update on the receipt of the BASE Redevelopment Excellence Award in Washington, DC last week.
So, good evening, members of the council/authority. I thought this was a perfect time to come before you and update, not so much for your benefit, but for the benefit of the public. Go back over the process again, particularly when we're at a crossroads. I think it's important to remind the public and help them understand where we are in the process and what's happening next. One of the things we do, and have done every year that I've been here, is met with the army, our project managers. It was, in the early years, they used to fly out here, but with budgets the way they are in the federal government, we go back there every year. And one of the other very fortuitous things we did back there is receive an award, the 2014 BASE Redevelopment Excellence Award. And we represented Riverbank in the best possible way in those senate chambers, and you see, we have the city manager, council member Barbara Martinez, myself, and then we had a representative from Congressman Denham's office also with us. We were really very honored and proud. We were in good company, as the mayor reminded us last time, with other congressmen, senators, governors that were also receiving awards. And so I did bring the award with me, back with me, carried it carefully, wrapped in very important clothes to keep it safe. And I'm not sure where we're going to put it. I think we thought maybe we'd display it prominently in the council chambers, because we are very proud of this. One other thing that did happen, you know, this is anecdotal, but I think you might appreciate this. At one of the sessions, there was also a conference of Association of Defense Communities, and one of the meetings had the head of installations of the army, the head of installations of the Navy, and of the Air Force. And they, of course, BRAC came up, and they asked about what the model would be for the next BRAC round, assumed to be 2017. And the answer from the Air Force was, well, we'll just have to wait and see if there is another BRAC round. And the answer from the Navy was, essentially, we're doing what we think we need to do. We like the process, and we'll just keep working it. And the Army's answer was, go talk to Debbie Olson in Riverbank. Riverbank has the model we will use in the next BRAC round. So congratulations to the leadership that you've provided. I think it's clearly been recognized, not only by, and I'm, again, just can't tell you how proud I am, and I think the community should be very proud of what we've done and been able to achieve, and we are getting noticed nationally. So beyond that, let me start on a little bit of a conveyance update. I am not going to go through. I'm going to just talk about the conveyance process in large blocks of time. We have covered quite a bit already. And for those who would like, there are sheets in the back of a handout of what I'm going to share, so that, oh, well, that's not where we want to be. Let's go backwards. And I think it's smart to always start at the beginning, if we can ever get there. So this is the pathway to conveyance. That's what I intend to show you tonight. The conveyance is actually really kind of four separate phases, and those phases are the formation and planning of the LRA, and then we have an implementation phase, there is a negotiation and documentation phase, and then there's an execution and performance that is expected. So if you'll kind of remember, in 2006 is when the LRA was formed. This is really the formation phase, and during that first phase, 2006 to 2008, the LRA and the city spent their time in public meetings, discussing, getting consensus, speaking to other stakeholders. What do you want to see happen with this facility? What's most important to the community? And then beyond that, what's also required in the federal process is that excess federal property must be offered to homeless assistance providers. So we also had to reach out to homeless assistance providers and find out whether there was any appropriate use in that arena. For us, there was not an appropriate response to that, so we did submit to the army and to Housing and Urban Development a plan, reuse plan, for their review and approval. Once it's approved, we move into the next implementation phase, 2009, 2010, where we actually go back to the federal government and ask for a designation as an implementation LRA. And that is to implement the public document that we, the community-supported document, the reuse plan. So then we are now, then we move to the negotiation phase. So the negotiation phase is in large part negotiations on sort of a parallel track. You have the real estate deal, and you have the environmental requirements for cleanup. So it can be two separate entities negotiating for, you know, but going along the same track. In this case, the LRA is looking to both take that property, but also do the environmental cleanup on behalf of the army. So we work negotiating the army with regards to the real estate deal. We consult with the regulatory agencies about what they want done, what the cleanup levels are. And of course, one of the things that we did very clearly was to try and retain and expand the tenant businesses and grow employment at that site. This is actually where we are now, the current step. We are still, in my opinion, in this negotiation and documentation stage, and I've outlined here what's necessary for us to get out of this particular stage. We have the memorandum of agreement that finalizes the real estate deal, that the LRA board will need to provide a resolution to the army. The army will then accept it. We need deeds developed on that property. We need to find out what restrictions there might be on that property, if there is contamination, until it's cleaned up and then after. For example, we know there's groundwater contamination. That may prevent us from digging a new well in that area. We need to see that and make sure that we agree, and we have not seen those deeds yet. The army is interested in continued use of certain buildings and certain portions of the property, but we need to see a lease, see what that looks like. It could be restricted use, where we could never go in there. It could be cooperative use, where we could also utilize that space. We don't know that yet. Then we need the bills of sale for the excess personal property to allow us to sell it, remove it, whatever. This is not the environmentally contaminated surplus property. That is all gone. This is property that we can sell for, and then the money would be, the army has agreed to allow us to keep that. But we need those bills of sale. And then the environmental services cooperative agreement would be what the vehicle that would allow us to clean up the remaining PCB contaminations from the siding on those buildings. And then what's next? Well, the final steps are the execution and performance. After we've executed, we will need to then clean up the property. We will be, you know, there'll be, the environmental agencies will be watching over our shoulder, the army will be watching over our shoulder, and the Department of Justice to make sure that we do what we said we'd do, we entered into an agreement. And we anticipate this, you know, the documentation, again, it's kind of going around the approval process, but as I say there, it's, we're not going to hurry the documentation. We are going to do it right. We're going to make sure it's right. And quite frankly, whether the property is transferred or not, we are doing the most important thing, which is building jobs and businesses at that site, and we are grateful to the army for allowing us to do that. So what's left? Oh, yes, we get to celebrate. So that is my quick, down-and-dirty update on our conveyance, and we are very much hoping to see the MOA before you, before the end of the summer. We know that the memorandum of agreement itself is complete and agreed to, but those deeds and other documents we still have yet to see. We have not seen them yet. That was one of the topics of discussion when we were back in Washington, DC.
One quick one on the administrative order of consent with the Justice Department. Is that their oversight on us?
So what that is, is it is not an agreement entered into by the army, but they take, it's really actually an EPA requirement. It's to make sure that the money that the army gives us is used for the cleanup and that the cleanup is done. They are the stick for us. That's exactly right.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Comments, questions? Nicely done.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I'm watching my watch.
I am too.
And I would like to congratulate the council and Debbie for all of the work that has gone into the revitalization and continuation of the jobs and economic growth that is happening at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. It's benefiting not only the city, but the region. And it really, it is a visionary model, and it's a model that is unique for city government, and I think that this council and Debbie deserve a lot of credit. So we can have some small moments of celebration, in fact, that we've been acknowledged by our peers for BASEs Reuse Excellence.
Okay. Item 2, public comment. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the matter, the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council and LRA board. Are there any public comments?
There is. I am John Gasper. I live at 5314 Gold Hill Drive here in Riverbank. I'm also a pickleball player. I'm from the Central Valley Pickleball, and I'm here tonight to extend to members of the city council and individuals in the Parks and Recreation Department to attend our second year anniversary luncheon party on July 19th. We'll be, we're asking, we're inviting you to come to Zerillo Park at 10:30 to either watch us play or join us, and you can come earlier if you would like. And then at, we'll be breaking down the courts at 11:15, and then going to El Rosal at 2542 Patterson Road to have our luncheon, and you will be our guest at the luncheon. We sent you an invitation last week, but I wanted to come here tonight and give you a personal invitation. A member of our club is a member of the council, Cal Campbell, and I'm sure probably he has told you more than you want to hear about pickleball, but if he has not, it's a game played on a tennis court. We play with a paddle and a plastic ball, and you hit the ball over the net. When we first started, we just had four players, and the Parks and Recreation Department allowed us to play on one of the courts at Zerillo Park, and each time we played, we had to draw lines with chalk. Soon, we were able to paint one court. The pickleball courts are smaller than a tennis court, so we were able to paint one court on one of the courts at Zerillo Park, and we painted a second. We currently have five courts that have been painted, and soon to be eight. We have, we are now, we have actually 47 members. We actually gained one today. We are the largest, not the largest, we're the sixth-largest club playing on a public court in the state of California, and this has all been done in the last two years. We have, at the request of the Parks and Recreation Department, we have purchased our own $1 million general liability insurance. We have purchased six portable nets, and we have painted the courts at no city expense. We provide both recreational and competitive play. We are open to the public. We invite the public to come play. The way that we've gained our membership, the City of Riverbank is actually listed on the U.S. Pickleball Association as a site to play in Riverbank. We are on Facebook. We've had two articles in a local paper, and one in the Modesto Bee by word of mouth, and frankly, they're one of the most successful ones, is that when we play at the lower court, there's an upper court there, and tennis players come there, and they're interested in what we're doing, they come down, and once they touch that pickleball paddle, three of the four, you know, become our members. So again, I, to conclude, I want, I'm hoping that you can come and join us in celebrating this event. The City of Riverbank, you should be proud. They have a very successful pickleball program, and again, it's, you know, thanks to Carrie Webb at the Parks and Recreation Department, who has worked with us and allowed us to grow. So, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I do have extra flyers if you would like. Where should I?
Just set them at the table, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
Evening. My name's Paul Fincher. I live at 2528 River Cove Drive in Riverbank, California. I'd like to thank the council and the redevelopment team for letting me speak for a couple of minutes. I'd also like to thank the city in general. When I come to the city council meetings, we pledge allegiance to the flag, and we say a prayer, and that's diminishing throughout our whole country, and I'd like to say thank you for standing fast with those things. They're very honorable to me as a veteran, so thank you. I'd like to move along and just talk a couple of minutes about some of the things that the mayor's been a part of, Susan and Chief Kylie, and I appreciate their help, and by no means is this a reflection of anything they're not doing. Everybody is working at the level they can and impacting the things they can. The mayor's got us a flashing, you know, speed limit sign and some other things. The basic issue is the overflow, and I don't even know if it's fair to say, all the overflow from the Jacob Myers Park to the River Cove side on the River Cove Drive, actually. The last four weekends have had over 122 cars on River Cove Drive with approximately three to four, five people per car. So you're talking hundreds of people, 200, 250 people last Sunday and Saturday. And they leave, and you all know the story. We've talked about it before. We've brought in maps and stuff, but I just want to reiterate two things. One is the thanks for everything that's happening, and number two is, I think we're beyond what we can handle at this level. I think we need to reach out for help from other folks, whether it be the Army Corps of Engineers, whether it be environmental, you know, the side of the river is being degraded. We've got 200 people, 400 people on a weekend or more. There was 27 cars when we came up here tonight with three to four people in a car. They open up their rafts. They do their business in the bushes. I've sent some emails out, and I won't bother you with a lot more after this one today. Thank you, Mayor, for being patient with me.
You can keep saying them.
But, you know, it's not a personal thing against Parks and Rec. You guys have done a fabulous job, and I know it's expanding for you guys on a daily basis. Chief, you're sending people down on a regular basis anytime we call. We can't thank you enough for that, but like I said, it's beyond that now. It's way beyond that. It's to the point where it's, you've got people defecating all over the place. You can't walk your dog on the side of the street anymore, you know, because of the glass and the trash and the smell. They're digging holes in the side of the river. They're making new exits and entrances, egresses to the river. It's just, they're down to the bamboo now around the corner. It's getting really bad, and I don't know who to reach out to anymore. You know, we had meetings once a month for almost all of last year. 2014, they've died off, because people, quite frankly, are just kind of tired of the big things not getting done. The little things are getting done. People are hearing us, but the big things aren't getting done. And it's bringing riffraff into the neighborhood on a regular basis. And I don't like to use that word, because when we were driving over here tonight, we saw a bunch of kids coming up from the river, just had smiles on their face and everything. I turned to my wife Debbie and said, you know, that's what the river's for. The river's for everybody to enjoy and love. It's not to degrade and disrespect people's homes in front of it and around it. And I'm sure when the city fathers intended the area for the River Cove area, it was the farthest thing from their mind that, you know, on a day like Sunday, there'd be over 222 cars lined up crossing over the river. And we can look at that in several ways. One of them is, you know, it's a huge loss, you know, from revenue standpoint to the jewel. You know, Jacob Myers Park is the jewel of the valley. Everybody wants to come there and enjoy the river and stuff, so. I don't know what else to do, so I'm reaching out to y'all. Some of you I shake hands with, and I know some of you don't, and hopefully someday I'll be able to do that, but please, we need some help. So, thank you.
And your letter is submitted too, as evidence for us.
Evidence. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other further public comment? Seeing none, bring it back up. Jill, would you make any comments on anything that was stated?
First, I would like to thank Mr. Gasper, members of the Pickleball Association, for their invitation to their second anniversary, and certainly congratulate them on their great success. In regards to the River Cove issues, Mr. Fincher and members of that community have worked diligently with staff over the course of the last year. We were aware of the issues that have come up and the vast number of people that were seen at all of our parks, as well as in the River Cove neighborhood. I believe that Ms. Fitzpatrick, as you recall, gave an update on that at the last city council meeting, and we are speculating on what some of those causes might be. One might be the increase in cost at other facilities in the region, making Jacob Myers Park the best deal in town, and in fact, the county, because we're seeing a massive amount of people at Jacob Myers Park as well, as well as our other parks. In regards to the issues that have been specifically brought up, we do have ONTEL security out there on a regular basis. We are looking at ways to possibly increase that security, but of course, there is a cost associated with that, and we would need appropriations to do that. The chief, Sue and I met this afternoon. We're looking at some of the legal issues that impact our ability to restrict movement in that area and restrict access to the park. So we certainly have great compassion for the neighbors there that are dealing with this, and know it must be very, very frustrating. We are limited in many of the things that might be obvious things to do, such as restricting access to that park. But we are looking legally, I've asked our legal team to investigate that, to document exactly what we can and cannot do. We're looking at some parking issues. The concern is that one solution creates more problems, and we don't want to create more problems than we solve with our approach. The big issue is ONTEL security and bringing them out, and I'd like to actually sue Fitzpatrick to address that issue in more detail, to bring the council up to date on what we are doing now and some of the things that we're looking at. But again, there is a cost, and how many resources we can devote to that small area when there's a demand for resources everywhere, and that's ultimately going to be a policy call. So Sue, could you provide an update on what we're doing now and some of the options there?
Mayor, members of the council, currently what we're doing is we're sending ONTEL security out four times a week, and what they call them is hits, is they actually go, and we try to pinpoint the time, the best time that we're going to catch people and the most people, and so they charge us per hit, is what they call. And then they give me a report every Monday morning of what citations we're giving, what they saw. They also go to Zerillo Park, because it's nearby. So we're providing that up to four times a week and more. Our plan was when we see across the river something going on, that our staff calls, and we can radio in another hit to come through. And then I know our sheriff's department is supplementing that. We are doing a garbage run, even though sometimes it doesn't look like it, because it does accumulate very quickly, five times a week. So we do it on the weekends as well as during the week. And we had actually two staff out there Monday morning, because things were so bad, and skip Tuesday, which we probably shouldn't have, because they usually go Monday, Wednesday, Friday during the week. So now we're considering going out there every morning, sending a crew out. So that's kind of what we're doing, and like the city manager mentioned, we are just, have been trying to figure out, I think I mentioned to council, we had our first red flag on Easter when we were totally packed. We've never had to staff on Easter before, and it's just escalated. And not only at Jacob Myers Park, but the other surrounding parks, we're hearing Orange Blossom at Knights Ferry is closing to capacity, McHenry Park, a lot of others. I think we're going to see more, because I heard Woodward Reservoir is going to close July 15th, which is going to shift more people our way. So there's a combination of things going on, but it has caused a lot larger numbers for us to deal with, and we are seeing that with our other parks as well. So it is a challenge, and I know that the city manager and the chief and I were looking at some options. I did, right before this meeting, get an email from the Army Corps that we'll want to read, because it brings up some things we might want to look at as well, so I think we can come up with some more options.
And we believe that Fish and Game might be able to address some of the issues that Mr. Fincher brought up in terms of the impact on the environment. We would also encourage the residents to call Fish and Game. Sometimes the residents get a better response than we do as a government agency, and so their participation, and that's very helpful. And again, the River Cove neighborhood is really a great example of coming together and how to effectuate change in your neighborhood. And while it has died off this year, they still have connections to the city. They've been working with the city, and we certainly appreciate that, and Mr. Fincher's leadership in particular.
With the Fish and Wildlife Department of State you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Fish and Wildlife, they are very active in a lot of the areas, so they may be able to tell you what, where people can walk, which may limit the access, not total access. The Army owns the berms, don't they?
There is a, they have an easement along the river.
Okay.
So, and that's their main concern there.
So what I don't want to do is start going into the direction of limiting parking at all times, and that would restrict the residents as well as, because I know that last weekend I was there, and there was a large party with probably equal, more than vehicles around that area than down at the river. So when you have a function, you know, you want to use the access, so you can't deny it or restrict it. So, and if we say restrict- So, or if we say restrict it in one area, it shifts now in front of homes further down into the, into the neighborhood. And they'll go to Zerillo Park and take all of that access, all the parking there and you don't want to do that. So it's going to have to be something above us, I'm sure. And we should be engaging, not that we're making any decisions, but we probably should start engaging.
Yeah, and that, we have had, had communications with the various agencies and the issues, the security issues are not of major concern to them. So I think-
No, it's, it's not. That's not their area, but by identifying areas that they are concerned with may limit the amount of access. The other thing too is how much would it cost to have an on-tel there the entire time from over a weekend?
We have done estimates of that and Sue, I believe, has those handy.
Yeah, if we did the rest of the year, I kind of figured this out before I came in, it would be about $2,500, $2,600 to finish out the year with that. For the course of a summer, which is the 18 weeks or so, it'd be about $7,000, six or $7,000.
Weekends to do more coverage for, for a period of eight hours each weekend.
Eight hours a day for, and then including the couple holidays that fall within that period of time.
And the hours would be from 10 to?
We would have to look at that, but I'd say probably, you know, around 10 or 11 on to where after desk. We'd have to kind of play with that a little bit and see. Going out too, too early would be too early.
That is something we need to consider, I'm sure, in the future.
We can include that as a budget discussion item on the 24th.
On the 24th, okay. All right. We'll discuss it. Moving on to item three, consent calendar, consistent of item 3A, waive readings, item 3B, approval of May 27th, 2014, City Council Local Redevelopment Authority minutes. Item 3C, second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 2014-5 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 land usage by adding new chapter 157, water efficient landscape and irrigation of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, calling and giving notice for a holding of a general municipal election on Tuesday, November 4th, 2014, for general, for election of certain officers as required by the provisions of laws of the state of California relating to the general law cities. Requesting the County Board of Supervisors of Stanislaus to permit the county elections officials to render election services and requesting the consolidation of said election with statewide general election held on the same date. Item 3E, resolution, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District Number 05-01 Sterling Ridge. One, resolution of the City of Riverbank, California, City Council ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain District Number 05-01 Sterling Ridge for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Item 3F, resolution, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District Number 2006-01 Heartlands, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, County of Stanislaus. State of California declaring the intentions to levy and collect annual assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain District Number 2006-01 Heartlands for fiscal year 2014-15. Item 3H, resolution, Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item two, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item three, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item 3I, resolution, Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California initiating proceedings for annual levy of assessments for Sierra Vista Estate Lighting and Landscaping District for fiscal year 2014-15. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item three, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item 3J, resolution, Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessment for Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item two, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item three, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Ridgewood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014-15. Item 3K, resolution, River Cove Landscape and Lighting District, one, resolution of the City Council, City of Riverbank, California, initiating proceedings for annual levy of assessments for Landscape and Lighting District Number One, River Cove subdivision for fiscal year 2014-15. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for Landscape and Lighting District Number One, River Cove subdivision for fiscal year 2014-15. Three, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Landscape and Lighting District Number One, River Cove subdivision for fiscal year 2014-15. Item 3L, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California authorizing the submittal of an application to the California State Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Home Investment Partnership Program and if selected, the execution of a standard agreement, any amendment thereto and any related document necessary to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of those items that I have read? Anyone from the public wishing to pull any of the items from the consent calendar which I've just read? And then I bring it back to the City Council on Consent Items 3A through 3F, 3H through 3L.
Make a motion that we approve items as just read with the exception of 3G.
A second.
We have a motion to approve selected items and a second.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council authority member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And in regards to item 3G, we're going to draw lots, sort of, to determine who gets to go have a break.
Okay. Mayor, we want to continue this time.
Oh, well, thank you. So honored.
So what's the highest number you could get?
21.
Okay, good. I have 13.
Lucky 13.
I'm 20.
That's good.
No, I'm nine. Guess I gotta go.
Okay, so the highest number, council member Tucker will stay to vote.
And just for the record, we had three council members living within 500 feet of the item.
Okay, continuing on, we need to take a look at item 3G. I'll read it. Resolution, Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Crossroad Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Two, resolutions of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for the Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District declaring its intentions to levy annual assessments for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Item three, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Are there any comments from the audience on those items? Any comments from council? Then I'll bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion that we accept item 3G as read.
Second.
We have a motion for the items to be accepted, so we'll carry on with that.
Council authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council authority member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Item passes 3-0. Now we can have our others returned, correct?
That was asked about.
Good job, Vice Mayor.
We're not giving you a district lighting.
You did such a great job and so short, you might as well continue on. Okay. Item six, new business. Item 6.1, set a public hearing date for the appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of conditional use permit 01-02014, early Semlinsky for an accessory structure at 5806 Alton Court, Riverbank, APN 075-089-046.
Mayor members of the City Council, the purpose of this item is to set a public hearing date for an appeal that was filed on the action of the Planning Commission consistent with the Riverbank Municipal Code. So this evening, all we are asking you to do is to establish that public hearing date for July 22nd, 2014, so the appropriate noticing can be done. A little bit of background, the applicant submitted an application for an accessory structure in his backyard of approximately 1,045 feet. The Planning Commission had concerns about that and denied the application and as a result, the applicant is appealing that decision to the City Council. If the City Council acts to establish the public hearing date on July 22nd, the appropriate notices will be sent out to the neighbors and that will be prepared for your consideration at this time. Tonight, the only action we are asking is for the establishment of the public hearing date. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those with the assistance of Mary Zellagassia.
When the hearing be?
It would be at the regular City Council meeting.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishes to speak about having a public hearing on the 22nd of July? Saying none, bring it back for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept item 6.1 as read. A second.
We have a motion to approve a public hearing for, appeal of a, of a Planning Commission denial of conditional use for July 22nd, 2014, and we have a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
LRA item 6.2, review and discuss the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 Local Redevelopment Authority LRA budget.
Yes, Chair, Mayor, and Council and Board of Directors, at this time I'd like to have Melissa Holdaway from the Riverbank Industrial Complex, also known as the Local Redevelopment Authority, present an overview of the proposed budget for 2014, 2015. We anticipate that we'll be reviewing this with you tonight and then we'll be bringing it to you, requesting adoption on the 24th of June, along with the regular municipal budget. Ms. Melissa.
Good evening, Chair and authority members. Bringing you the proposed budget for the Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority for fiscal year 2014 and 2015. As a budget overview, the established beginning reserve that we're expecting to have at the end of June 30th is $198,668 and that may change once we have all of the revenue expenditures reported through the finance department. So that number is not a definite number. The estimated revenues that we have expecting coming in is $3,000, $3,079,113 with estimated expenditures of $2,899,757 with an ending reserve at the end of this next fiscal year of $378,024 and that's an increase of 12% over the beginning of this fiscal year. Fund revenue breakdown is as follows. We do have a 76% decrease in our revenues for this next fiscal year due to the ESCA Number One completion and that grant closing out. We have tenant rent increases of $217,000 in this next fiscal year due to two additional tenants that have come out on the site. And the sale of personal property, once that OEA is signed, we can start the, the sale of the personal property that we have available. Site expenditure overview, 2013, 14 expenditures were $1,371,500 and the estimate this next fiscal year is $1,698,700. That's a difference of $327,000 with a 24% change and that is for electrical upgrades that need to happen on the site, OCB repairs for one and a new transformer on the site to support any future development that we have as well as growth for the tenants that we do currently have on the site. And that's the electrical infrastructure of $400,000 that was estimated by our electrical contractor that we have on site and this is going to be a one-time charge. Grant expenditure overview, 13, 14 expenditures were $11,648,584 and this next fiscal year is $1,201,057 and that difference is the ESCA Number One, so the change is 90% for the grant. So this is only accounting for the OEA grant that we're applying for. The administrative expenses for this fiscal year was $36,000. The next fiscal year that we're coming into for 1415 is reduction of 20% to $28,980. That's a difference of $7,020. And the ESCA, of course, is $10 million that we received this fiscal year. Then this next fiscal year, we have $613,000 in reserve, just, we have $300,000 to pay off the ED specific plan and $313,000 to clean up the remaining personal property that we have on site for a tenant. The grant anticipated expenditure increases is the site power system and load flow study and that is a study that we have in this next OEA grant that, that we're proposing. And this is to analyze the existing system for deficiencies and model for expansion. And that's $35,000. The outstanding items for ESCA Number One is a closeout of the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement and paying the final West End contract with their contingency, pay off the ED Bank specific loan through our admin, and then the remediation of retained The LRA outstanding items are the legal settlements, the ongoing litigation with Martin Transport that we're hoping that we can have resolved in this fiscal year, ESCA Number Two negotiations, and the OEA execution. Any questions?
Looking at the numbers, I think I saw that. When you do the sell of personal property, that's $1 million. That's an estimate or is that a?
It's an estimate.
Okay. At the end, and that's a one-time sell, correct?
Yes.
But the ending reserve doesn't reflect that amount. What happens with that? Do you have administration to go with that? Just, just briefly tell me.
You're saying that the, the million dollars should be the reserve at the end?
Well, no, it doesn't increase your reserve. Where does that go?
The $1 million? It's revenue that's received on the site and some.
Does that, I know you have to go back into the site, go back in. So that's not going to go to your reserve and then later on into the site? going to go to your reserve and then later on into the site?
No, we have plans to use those for expenditures that we, for deferred maintenance that we've been putting off, so those will help with the deferred maintenance on the systems and
I did have a question on the personal sale of property also. Is it $1 million for each year, or you could get it one year, or could get it next year, you're just putting it in there for one or the other?
Yeah, it's actually a placeholder that we have, that we're hoping that the MOA is signed in this fiscal year, and then we can execute the sale of the property.
Do we have a buyer on that? Do we have a buyer on that sale of property that's anticipating, anticipated buyer on that?
So there are several tenants that actually have negotiated a sale price for the equipment that they're using. So we took that sale price, and this $1 million is that sale price, plus there's pieces that we did not anticipate that we believe we can sell now after doing the entire cleanup. So we think that that's actually very low. We are hoping to get more than $1 million, but we believe we have a minimum of $1 million in personal property that we can sell. And remember, those are very large presses that sell for $400,000 apiece, and we have seven of those, and so, you know, maybe we'll give them a twofer. They take them all.
Are those the big presses that the, was the gun manufacturer stuff that she showed us last time? Okay. And I'm sorry, I just had one more thing. It's 1,000, not 2,000, or 1 million, not 2 million?
Yeah.
Okay. I got it now. Thanks.
This is a public hearing. Any questions from the public? Bring it back for a, we just accept, correct?
Yes, this evening, it's just an opportunity to review, to kind of provide an overview, and if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, we would be happy to address those as well.
All right. Thank you.
Question from the audience. Oh, he's asking here.
Okay, moving on to item, LRA item 6.3, request approval to submit a grant application to the Office of Economic Adjustment Grant to support, in support of Local Redevelopment Authority Administration and implementation of the Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant Reuse Plan activities.
Ms. Debbie Olson will be presenting an overview of this grant proposal.
Yes, tonight, again, we are talking all about budgets, and this is an important funder that we've had, an important partner that we've had since the very beginning. So I will let you know that I've provided a little additional detail in this because I think there may have been questions from the public along the way with this money decrease, et cetera, and you'll see that there's more detail than usual in here. I thought that might be helpful if you do come in and have some of these questions. So to remind you and the public, the Office of Economic Adjustment, or OEA, it's the Department of Defense's primary source for assisting communities in adversely impacting or in helping them with realignment. They offer technical and financial assistance. As you can see, we do, they do fund studies that are necessary. They don't fund anything like construction or anything like that, though. And they often coordinate involvement of other federal agencies, which is extremely helpful. So I put this slide on here to sort of show the funding history. We have received grant funds since about 2006, 2007 fiscal year. In total, we've received something just under $4 million throughout this time, not including this grant. But I will tell you that we've also returned $360,000 to them unused during years when, for example, there might have been salary freeze and we anticipated increases, or quite frankly, most often, it's because our legal fees hasn't been used up because we haven't gotten that far in the, in the conveyance process. So there is also a step-down plan with OEA, and we provided OEA with a step-down plan last year. This is planning for moving out of dependence on the Office of Economic Adjustment, and we started last year, and you can see that we anticipate the growth of personal, through the personal property removal, administration fees with the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreements, both 1 and 2, additional lease revenue, and hopefully, we are able to be weaned off entirely by the fiscal year 2016, 17. Now, what's really unusual about this is we are planning our weaning off prior to conveyance in other brack years. You didn't start weaning off until after you conveyed, and then typically, it was a three-year step-down, three to four-year step-down. We are, hopefully, we will be weaned off, as I said, and we're starting the weaning. This year, as you noted, we are asking for just under $500,000, and this is the OEA portion. So what does OEA actually pay for? There are actually only three, they call them object classes of funding. The personnel, which is, for us, it's three full-time staff and then three hourly staff here, and you can see those staff members are actually listed. OEA requires job descriptions. OEA requires justification for those. We go through quite an extensive research in making sure that we're right-sized. And then under the second category, which is our, I'll back up a little bit, our operational expenses, we have three different ways. Did you like how it went back and forth? Are you dizzy yet? It's equipment, supplies, and travel. Office of Economic Adjustment, what they say with this federal grant is you can move money within the object class, but not across object class. So when we've had, for example, extra money in personnel, we couldn't move it into equipment and supplies. Where equipment's concerned, we have, we started out using all old Army surplus things, computers, printers, and we have, we made sort of a depreciation schedule for every third year, when it's the third year, we replace a portion of what we've been using. And we've, we've had very good luck. Clearly, upgrading software was important in making sure the whole team was connecting with the same software and with the city. Supplies, these are normal routine things that we do, and then travel, such as what we just did to meet with the Army. And then the last is contractual services. There are only two under this. One is our legal services, and the other is this site power system and load flow study that Melissa also spoke about, that will help us for the future, understand what our future needs are on the site. So I'm sure you really want to see the numbers now. So here you are for your consideration. Under personnel and salaries, we're talking about asking for $381,000, a little over that. That's the federal share for a total salaries and benefits of $424,077. Operating expenses, you can see here, and you'll notice that travel, there is no match. A couple of years ago, when there was a freeze on travel, OEA generously picked up, and there was no match required for the travel. But we do plan out and justify every, where we go, how much, et cetera. Equipment, as I mentioned before, is typically the replacement of technology that we've been using, and then supplies include lease on a copier, janitorial, et cetera. And then the final you'll see are contractual services. The grand total there, our funding request, again, is just under $500,000. That's what we will be asking for in this grant. There it is, big. Do you have any questions? This is really by far the simplest OEA grant we've written, very straightforward, very easy.
I just had one quick one.
Sure.
Okay, so the federal share, that money comes from?
The LRA doesn't take any funds from the general fund or from the city. All of our match comes from lease revenue, or over the years, we've also matched it with other grants.
So that's the non-federal?
The non-federal portion comes from the lease revenue on the site or a match. For example, we can match it with, if we had a CDBG grant, we could match it with that
This is a public hearing? Then no public comment? Bring it back for item 6.3. Do we have a motion to approve to allow the submission of a grant application to OEA?
I'll move to approve.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve item, LRA item 6.3, and a second.
Authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Authority member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Authority member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.4, option for facility rental fees and waivers.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, as you may recall, in May, we provided an overview of the process being used for facility rentals, as well as an overview of the fee waivers that have been, have been granted in the past, and reviewed some options for how we might deal with that in the future. At that time, the City Council requested that we bring back some additional options for consideration, including those that would help reduce the reliance on the general fund to offset the costs associated with the building. So at this time, Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will provide an overview of some of those options for your consideration. We understand that this can be an interesting subject, and it deals directly with the public. If you'd like to provide us additional feedback and have us come back again, that would be fine. If you'd like us to give it some of the thought and talk to your colleagues in the nonprofit arena, that would be fine as well. We just wanted to continue the discussion.
Mayor, members of the council, as a quick review, where we kind of left out often in our last discussion is the facility rentals go through the Enterprise Fund, and the Enterprise Fund is designed to pay for itself, be self-sustaining. So what we've come to is our facility rentals have not been sufficient enough to provide the offset for operation and maintenance of our buildings, and then along with that, we have some, we had established some service club fees at a lower rate, and over the years, they became, it became to where they were being applied inconsistently. Some service clubs were paying zero, some were paying only custodial, so I think that added to the point that we are now, we're probably $5,000 to $8,000 in deficit in the Enterprise Fund, which will need to be supplemented unless we choose an option that we can correct the deficit. So what we wanted to do is come back with some options. So just, like I mentioned, the fees that we're speaking of predominantly are the Community Center and Scout Hall buildings. Those are the buildings we rent out. Due to the current fee schedule being too low, we haven't raised fees in over five, probably closer to 10 years. And then also, the waivers that have been granted have led us to not having the sufficient The current fee schedule right now, as we're operating, the non-resident fee for, say, the Community Center is $1,000. We have a lesser fee for residents of 900, and then you can see the service club fee was established at a, quite, quite a bit lower rate. Scout Hall, same scenario. Meeting fee for any of the buildings was $25. Then if you look at the last column, the actual amount collected, for non-residents, they're paying the full amount for rentals. The residents are paying the full amount. The service clubs pay anywhere from zero to $60, and the $60 is usually when we only charge for custodial. Some service clubs are paying the service club fee, so that is happening in some cases. So one of the options that we wanted to present is to, and I think that council alluded to this a little bit at the last meeting, is possibly raising the fees for the general community, say, $200 for the Community Center and $100 for the Scout Hall, and enforce the established fees for the service clubs, say, at a future date, we say as of August 1st, or whatever date we decide, just to get us back online where the fees were originally established. So the facility rental fee for non-resident for the Community Center would be $1,200, Scout Hall $250, and then it would go down for residents, and then service clubs would be the same as they're already established, but we would be collecting the correct fees. Just as a quick note, we did do a survey, and we, our fees for our facility rentals are lower than our surrounding areas. Saying that, our facilities are a lot older and in need of repair, where the facilities, say, Oakdale Series are very nice, so, but people love our facilities when they rent them, so they do comment on, that they do like them. Option number two is, again, raise the fees for the general community, increase the fees for the service clubs from zero to 60, which they're kind of paying now, to 150 for those already receiving waivers. So we raise the fees for the general community, and then the fee for the service clubs would be not quite what the established fee is, which is the 350, but it would be more than what it is now, so hopefully providing more of an offset that we need. And the meeting fee would go from $25 to 50 for the general community. It would remain the same. Most of the service clubs are not paying a waiver, so they would be, I mean, they are not paying a fee, they are receiving a waiver, so they would now, at some point in time, pay the $25 meeting fee per month. So that's option number two. Three, raise the fees for the general community, extend the current fee waivers to those already receiving them, so those nonprofits that are used to only paying custodial would continue to do that. Supplement the Enterprise Fund with $5,000 from the general fund to provide that offset Then option number four, current fee schedule. So we would not raise any fees for the general community or anyone. We would extend the fee waivers to the service clubs already receiving them, but we would need to supplement the Enterprise Fund with $10,000 from the general fund to compensate for, for that. So I have a summary here, so you don't have to remember all that, of the options, and we can talk a little bit about that if you have any questions. I know it's a difficult thing because we want to help the nonprofits and we want to keep our fees low, but we have the obligation to be able to pay for our utility bills and our services in the buildings as well, so it's, it's a difficult situation.
Many of the nonprofits earn income, and it's provided right back to the city in ways of park improvements, pool improvements, that are usually above what you would have charged them. Is that correct?
It depends. It depends on how many uses...
Not all of them, but some of them.
Yeah, that's correct. They do.
Couple of questions. I know that there's some older nonprofits in the community, and I believe the Christian Food Sharing is one of them, and they actually, if I'm not mistaken, built the Scout Hall and then turned it over to the city eventually. Is that correct?
We share use, correct?
And so, I'm just wondering, because of the circumstances, that if we should look at certain organizations that have been involved on that level, and maybe grandfather them in because of their involvement in developing the whole facility, and I know that that particular agency doesn't bring in a whole lot of money, and they put it right back into the community each week. And just a consideration, because of the circumstances involved with that, I don't know if there's some others involved like that, but I think we should look at those if, back in the past, there are some circumstances, and possibly, we might have to grandfather a couple of different service organizations in because of those situations. And my other question is, what percentage of the time, do you have any idea what percentage of the time during the year the facilities are rented out?
They're fully booked.
Fully booked, that's correct.
Yeah, for the most part. Sundays are slower. Sundays, I can't say they are. Saturdays are generally booked. We have a lot more smaller events like baptisms and birthday parties at the Scout Hall now, so they're, they're pretty well rented.
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the option that you were speaking of is kind of covered under option three, and that's where we would extend the current fee waivers to service clubs already receiving them, and they were granted a waiver at some point for that reason, probably us looking at what do they give back to the city. So that would be option three, and then that would... So that would be option three, and then that would require a supplement from the general fund in order to close that gap.
The only comment that I had was regarding option two, and it just seemed a little, and just my own, it just seemed a little steep for the service organizations on that particular one. And I feel kind of along the same lines with the mayor was talking about, that these service organizations give back to the community, and I understand it's kind of a fine line to walk here, and we need to be able to cover, cover the, you know, the buildings themselves. So, I don't know, just personally, option two, for me, just seemed a little bit steep for the, for the service organizations. So I guess I'm kind of leaning towards option one myself.
I have a philosophy, and I like to expound on that periodically, and in this case, it's a community center and other buildings that we use for community services, community benefit. When we, the city host, that's for the community. When the service clubs host, that's not exclusive, that's for the service group, and it's for the community. So items like that should remain with the community, and I like, I think that it should remain the way we currently have it, for the communities, for the service clubs, for their functions that they've had in the past. For those who are non-residents and residents using it for a private facility, private organization, I can see increasing it. Don't try matching Oakdale or Series. But we do need to recoup some more. So my feeling is that we should get a little bit more out to help the facilities, because it is being used, but still maintain that community center feel. So I like option three. And that, the current service group events that you're talking about are listed in our staff report.
Yes, they are. By the way, any fee increases or changes will be publicly noticed as required, and will come back to councils to where you would approve it by resolution. So once we would get direction on the option.
I think I agree with option three also, because I know that the nonprofits work very hard to give back to the community, and raising fees, I just don't, some of them don't even bring them, like council member Campbell said, they don't bring in any fees, and if they do, it's very, very little. And, you know, it goes right back into that event, even if it's just planning for the next year. It doesn't go anywhere. It just goes right back to the community. So if we have the funds for option three, I agree with that.
For the reasons stated, I also support option number three.
Likewise, I support that one, too.
This may be an easier vote than I thought. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ramon Bermeires from Roselle Avenue in Riverbank. In the event that you do get the raise for the community events that they are held, and please don't overdo it, I heard mayor saying, don't try to match Oakdale or Series, because they might have better, they might have better buildings. And the party might start going, well, if they're going to charge us more, why not go to where there is more quality of services or a building? If, in case of any repairs, they might be minimal, I hope, because I had to let you all know, that the four days that we've been using in the senior club for the senior meals, including now Fridays, I really much appreciate it. And there have been two different times, or three, to where I've been doing the cleanup, and there is some possibility of customers, I was joking with Kerry about maybe getting a finder's fee, no, because I recommend them, you know, that it's a really nice place to have, and there's even a forum that can be put a station, so on, you know. When I showed them the place that I happened to be there for the last part of the cleanup part of the, after the meal program. And to let you all know also that we very much appreciate it, has been an increase, increase of about four to six more people that we get for the senior meals. And one on Friday is, even without our cooking from the Riverbank High School students right now because of vacation, is been very successful. And so at the same time, I take this advantage of this time, to thank you all for keeping the support for all the senior meals. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for action, or discussion. Let's don't jump in on it.
Okay, well, I, I make a motion that we approve option number three. Second it.
We have a motion to approve option number three, and a couple of seconds for it.
Council member Barbara Martinez.
Double yes.
Council member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, counsel.
Should have had a separate one. Item 6.5, designation of voting delegate and alternate to attend the 2014 League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Mayor and members of the city council, as a member of the League of California Cities, each year they ask their member cities to designate a delegate to vote on the annual resolutions at their annual conference. This year, that conference will be held in early September in Los Angeles, September 3rd to the 5th, that's a week following Labor Day. And so we wanted to present that to you for consideration, to see who was planning to attend, who would like to be the designated voter on behalf of the City of Riverbank.
I'm not attending.
And I do, too.
I have to attend. I'm on the committees. There's no option on that.
And I would like to attend it, too.
Okay.
So we have four members, so if, I mean, the mayor, the mayor and the vice mayor could be the, the, the.
He's designated already as the.
So that's.
Alternate. So we have the primary and the alternate attending. So that would be the primary and the alternate. This is a public hearing. Bring it back. On item 6.5, designating the voting delegates and alternate to attend 2014 League of California Cities Annual Conference would be, primary would be O'Brien, and alternate would be Campbell.
Make a motion that we approve item 6.5.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 6.5 in a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. So our city clerk will indicate to the league that the mayor will be our voting delegate, the vice mayor will be the alternate, and we will make, start making arrangements for four of you to attend this conference, which is typically a very good opportunity to get exposed to what other cities are doing, what's working, what hasn't worked, some of the new trends in municipal government, and to get ideas. So it's really typically a very, a very valuable conference, so it's great that you're planning to attend.
Item 6.6, report on trespass enforcement.
Yes, the next two items will be presented by our police chief, Erin Kylie. These are two follow-up items to strategic plan objectives, and so the police chief is planning to provide an overview on both trespass enforcement and graffiti abatement measures. Chief Kylie.
Mayor and council members, as stated, the following staff report is for informational purposes only, there is no recommendation. This report has been prepared to complete the following strategic objective, which can be found at the city's website. It is to develop and implement a plan for increasing trespass enforcement along the Stanislaus River and education as needed. The City of Riverbank has experienced an annual reoccurring problem with illegal camping along the south, the south bank of the Stanislaus River, just outside the city limits, and actually encroaching into some of the city limits. This annual problem has been combated by working with Corps of Engineers to, once a year, send out eviction notices and then evict illegal campers. The reason that this is important is because the illegal encampments pose fire hazards. They tend to be locations where there's illegal drug use, there's human waste issues, sanitation issues, a whole lot of problems that revolve around the issue. So in order to go ahead and try to have a larger impact and mitigate the problem more effectively, the strategic plan is to increase the number of enforcement operations three times a year rather than just once a year, and by also partnering and utilizing additional, partnering with and utilizing additional agencies such as California Fish and Wildlife, Corps of Engineers, Fire Department, and anybody else that we can bring into the loop and whose resources we need. The third piece is by, is to implement and educate those that we contact, I'm sorry, implementing, educating, implementing an educational piece, where illegal campers and trespassers are provided information on numerous assistance resources. Basically, the deputies, when they do the eviction prior to the actual cleanup of the encampments, which is about three or four days prior, they give a flyer, which is basically nothing more than a copy that has all these resources listed on it, to the illegal campers. And what it does is it encourages them to use the 211 number, where they can call for resources, to contact Gospel Mission, United Way, Salvation Army, and a number of other resources that they may choose to utilize. Now, when we provide this, it's, it's based upon their willingness to go and utilize these resources. We can't force them to, but we strongly encourage them to, and hopefully by doing that, instead of just evicting them, we're also giving them some, we're giving them a remedy to their homelessness, so that they're, we're not just bouncing them from one location to another. So in any event, that's, that's basically what we're doing. If there are any questions, feel free to ask.
Do we have any numbers on how many of these folks are availing themselves of the services?
No, it's, that's tough to track, because all we do is we, we offer them, you know, points of contact, phone numbers. We don't really have a tracking mechanism to determine how many are taking advantage of that. I know that we had 12 encampments that we did evict in this last, this last operation. And when I say encampments, some of them are, some of them are nothing more than, you know, a flat spot with a, you know, a sleeping bag, or a sleeping mat, or something like that. And then some of them are actually dugouts in the, you know, the riverbank itself, you know, almost like little miniature communities, where it may be one encampment, but you may have, you know, five to 10 individuals living there. So there's obviously a large accumulation of debris and waste and trash and other things.
After these evictions, do you see an increase of homelessness in town or in parks, local community?
No, we haven't. And I think that, I think that part of that is because they know that there's, you know, there's an effort to address the problem, and, you know, that it's been said that, you know, failure to address is the same as condoning, and I think that as long as the problem's addressed, they realize that, you know, trespassing on other people's property and setting up encampments is not, really not an option. So they know that sleeping in the parks, you know, is not a viable option as well. And hopefully by, by limiting those opportunities and introducing other opportunities, we'll, you know, we'll continue to go ahead and route those folks to the resources they need and should be utilizing.
For the council, one of the benefits of the League of California Cities is sharing of information, and one of the ones that we, I shared it with the chief yesterday, San Bernardino County has, did a cost estimate on how much it costs to engage homelessness per capita, and it was in the neighborhood of about $2,800 a month. And that is police contact, emergency services, hospitalization, health services. And what they've done is that they've taken 1,000 people off the street and given them places to live, and that cost is $680 per person per month. That's for the county's cost, minimizing police services, contact, and others. And I think that we should explore that option, especially when we're down there, for the most part, down in Southern California, and talk with them, see how it got started, and proceed, and probably bring it back. I know it's, it does take a lot of volunteerism, but what it does is take away from the churches and the other areas that are providing these services for feeding and housing of the homeless, and get them out of the neighborhoods that, right next door are homes. So if, for example, if Christ the King Church is, is providing homeless services, that whole neighborhood is affected. They usually are kicked out at a certain time of the day and then brought back in at the end of time of the day, and it's, it does break, it does impact small areas more than it does others. This here is really an effort, in my belief, chief, is to first clean it up, but secondly, there's a lot of dry brush out there, and that it could start fires very easily.
The fire hazard's very real.
It is very real.
And that's why, that when you say three operations a year, spring, before the grass turns, it would be ideal, summertime, and then when, during the fall, right before the, you know, the winter comes, because it, the problem, you know, self-corrects during the winter months, just because, you know, people are obviously exposed, and so we don't have the problems as much in the winter months, and certainly the fire hazard isn't as great. So.
Is there funding requirements to this?
No.
All right. Any other comments on this? Any comments from the public? I have a public comment on this.
Ramon Bermeires, I came from Roselle Avenue in Riverbank. On this part that I came about years ago, in the building here in the corner, is now the property of City of Riverbank. Am I correct?
No, you're not.
This one here? It's not.
You're talking about the theater?
Yes.
No, it's not.
No, this corner here across the street, there used to be.
That's not always either.
Apartments, there is not. Okay, what would be the possibilities of the owner making some arrangements or putting some of the people that are the most, what they call it, clean, because of four or five individuals that I had met during the year, from last year to this year, and that they say that so many of them don't use the facilities of Goodwill, Salvation Army, and other shelters, because they don't want to follow the rules. So that's their choice. The rules of no smoking, the rules of no drugs, the rules of no weapons, the rules of whatever. And so, because of those individuals, so many others might not apply, they say. They get discouraged by these other ones, that they say, now they treat you this one, they treat you that way. But here in Riverbank, I don't know of any facility that they might have, and I was just suggesting as one of the facilities, you know, on, on. And I was just suggesting as one of the facilities, you know, on converting with the owner of a place like that that is empty for years. And it's a shame that Riverbank doesn't do nothing about it when they can. Thank you very much.
Any other further comment? Okay, thank you. We received the report. Item 6.7, graffiti abatement measures update.
This staff report is for informational purposes only. There's no recommendation with this one as well. It's been prepared to complete the following strategic objective which can be found at the city's website, updating the city council on graffiti abatement measures. Basically, two options for reporting and cleanup of graffiti. Option A, which is highly preferred if gang graffiti, if it is gang graffiti or a high dollar loss, this option is exercised by somebody calling Riverbank Police Services or dispatch. As a result of that, a community service officer or deputy will take a formal report and document the graffiti, photograph it, investigate leads, et cetera. The community service officer or deputy notifies Curtis at Riverbank Public Works, and then based upon variables and location, Curtis will respond with city staff and remove, or he will contact Deputy Acosta, who is one of our AWP deputies out of custodial, and he will respond with an alternative work program crew to clean up. That occurs anywhere from one to two times a week at this time. If it's on private property, the owner-operator removes, and that's if they have the ability to do so. The city can authorize city cleanup under certain circumstances. Somebody either has a financial or the financial inability to, or physically they're incapable of cleaning it up themselves, and the city has the option of helping out. Option B, which is less preferred but is a practical option with an uninterested or unidentified reporting party or victim, in that case, the caller can report the graffiti using the city's graffiti hotline, 869-7109. This line is checked daily by city staff or interns, and the incident is enrouted to code enforcement if it's on private property to address it, or Curtis at Public Works, who either responds with a city crew or has Deputy Acosta come out and clean it up on public property. The laws that can be utilized for enforcement of graffiti violations are California Penal Code 594, which prohibits graffiti or vandalism. If it's less than $400, it's a misdemeanor. If it's $400 or more, then it's treated as a felony. Riverbank Municipal Ordinance is 131.12, allows for the city to offer a reward of up to $500 for information leading to the arrest and conviction of a graffiti suspect. RMO 131.13 allows the city to require removal of graffiti from private property after seven days. If an owner-operator does not have the financial or physical ability to do the removal themselves, the city may assist in the effort after gaining consent and release of liability. When viewable from a public place and impacting the community, the city is authorized to use public funds for removal. In the rare case where an owner-operator absolutely refuses to cooperate, then formal abatement/civil action can be taken. 131.13 requires graffiti implements to be secured in stores. 131.16 prohibits sales of graffiti implements to minors. And 131.17 prohibits possession of graffiti implements by minors in public unless accompanied by a parent or guardian. We do occasionally make cases on violators. We've made them where we catch the crime in progress. We've also made them where we investigate after the fact, and through that investigation are able to determine who the offender is and develop a case where we can get prosecution and restitution is paid through probation. But those are -- they're infrequent. We already have a strong emphasis on cleanup, and I think that the cleanup is really what keeps a graffiti from advancing and precipitating to where it gets completely out of control. Because if you don't address it, again, that failure to address it is viewed as condament, and the problem just, you know, grows exponentially. So, are there any questions regarding the measures that are in place?
I just want to just comment again on what we spoke about yesterday. I'd like to have a wall, if we could, have a graffiti wall, so they can do their graffiti there. And once a month, you evaluate who's the best, give them an award, find out if they're doing it elsewhere in the city. But, you know, that has worked in other cities. The artists respect the other artists. Those are true artists, not the gang, not the gang taggers. And at the end of the month, you paint over it, have them do it again. That has worked very well. I know that has been talked about, but I would hate to find a wall that they would, you know, like a mural or something like that that they would want to paint on. That may stop some of it that's prolific in some of the shopping areas. That's just a thought. I don't know if there's any real statistics out there on it, but...
Well, I think there's, just to make a distinction, there is a difference between gang graffiti and graffiti artists, if you will. People that are tagging or consider themselves to be graffiti artists are, it's self-evident in their work. It's more artistic, it's more colorful, it'll have, you know, multicolors, different designs, they have their own unique sense of style and footprint. With gang art, it is very bare bones. It's very basic. You'll, you know, you've probably seen it, you know, XIV or 14 or the number 13, you know, typically red or blues are used depending on what gang they're associated with. So, but there's really no artistic element to that. So, I could see the wall helping resolve some of the sheer graffiti art and tagging, but it won't, you know, it won't mitigate the gang graffiti. So, I would agree, it's probably a viable option for graffiti artists, but for the gang element, it, you know, they're not going to participate. And I would presume that even if they did, that may be an issue. Because when they do tag, it's really a territorial thing. It's not, it's not, it has nothing to do with art. It's all about territory, so.
Comments, questions? Anything, anyone from the public wish to comment on item 6.7? So, you know, we come back and, what, do you have something to say? Well, come on up.
Ramon Bermejo, I came from Riverbank. On this thing with the graffiti, as you all know, there is some people of us that do help every once in a while and cleaning up on whatever we can on walls or properties that the owner gets really upset about it, and they're elderly people. And like the chief was saying, really, I agree 100 percent with that part, that if it is a territorial thing from gang bangers and people who, yes, are respectful of their property. The way that we see it is that to go directly to the parents of those people, they're usually younger people. They're not anybody over 20 really, or, you know, near their 30s or anybody like that. They're younger people that are to just cause recklessness and enforce it to the fullest and make the parents actually come and the public and help them clean up their mess. And it will be, if that type of enforcement is done, it will be less and less young kids that want to be doing that. And get measures that are radical measures like that. I suggested before, but maybe five, six years ago, and it was never, nothing known about it, or I wasn't never contacted on how to get. Two or three of my sons, at one time or another, were thinking of the people they knew in high school, and they were kids even from middle school at Cardoso. And they knew who they were, and they would tell their parents, you know, I would come with them and tell their parents, it's nothing personal, but this shouldn't be done. And two or three of the parents of two or three families did participate in that, just within ourselves. And it worked pretty well. They discouraged others, or their companions or friends, to be doing that anymore because it didn't leave anything good for anybody. And their parents were there with us during the, even though my sons didn't participate in that, but on doing the damage, but they did participate with me on cleaning up with them. And it worked pretty well, but I don't know how far you can take it. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? See none, and bring this back, and we received the update. Thank you, chief. Item 7, staff comments.
Mayor, members of the city council, just to finish up for the members of the public who might be listening, I want to encourage them, if they are a victim of graffiti vandalism, to call 911 and make sure there's a police report and get the appropriate resources. For those that see graffiti and want to make sure that it gets cleaned up, they can call the city's graffiti hotline at 869-7109, again, 869-7109. We really do appreciate it when people call in and let us know so we can get that on the schedule to get cleaned up. If it's public property, or contact the private property owner. So, we do appreciate the public's help there. I did want to, God bless you, mayor.
Thank you.
I did want to let the public know that there will be a budget advisory committee meeting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock in this room. So, if members of the public want to hit the farmer's market, pick up some fresh food and a snack, and then come over to listen to the budget advisory committee deliberate, they can certainly do that this evening. I also wanted to let the council know that we had a very successful business startup workshop today. We had 16 people come with either existing or are interested in, with existing businesses or interested in starting their own business. This was a workshop put on in partnership with the Alliance and Small Business Council. So, really very pleased to see that response. In regards to an upcoming budget item, our city council meeting item of note, the budget will be considered at the June 24 city council meeting. So, members of the viewing audience and, well, the public, if they're interested in participating, will be reviewing the budget at that time and requesting adoption of the proposed budget that was reviewed in detail by the council last month. And then finally, I just did want to kind of just provide a little bit more summary of our time in Washington, D.C. The city council did authorize travel for councilmember Barbara Martinez, myself, and the executive director to attend. In addition to receiving the award, we did have meetings with representatives from Congressman Denham's staff, Senator Boxer's staff, the Assistant Secretary for Installations, Tom Letterly, to talk about the progress being made and some outstanding issues with the ESCA. In addition to that, I had an opportunity to sit in on a session as part of the conference. And Debbie Olson did attend various sessions of the Association for Defense Communities Conference, as well as associated board meetings. So, I did want to let you know, we made good use of the time, appreciated the opportunity to be there representing Riverbank. It was also interesting, when we arrived on Wednesday, Z-Board, a company at the Riverbank Industrial Complex, was featured as part of an article that was on the front page of the Wall Street Journal. So, a lot of Riverbank buzz in D.C. last week, and I do appreciate the opportunity to do that. And congratulations again to Debbie and to the councilman, and to the businesses that were so important to that success.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
I just have a couple of things. Again, I'd like to congratulate the LRA folks and just say how proud I am to be sitting up here and seeing that kind of stuff go on and hear about Riverbank being recognized in D.C. That's pretty cool stuff. I just wanted to thank Mr. Fitcher for coming tonight and representing your neighborhood and understand that you have some issues down there, and hopefully we can all work together and get some of those taken care of. I just appreciate your time and effort, and your wife's coming down here this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
As you heard earlier, our trip to D.C. was, I just think that I was very fortunate and proud to attend that award ceremony. And as you also heard earlier, that our City Riverbank is being used as the model for future base closing of all the right things to do to plan and execute a reused plan. And our senior health and safety fair on May 28th, it went very well during the farmer's market. And we are planning a graffiti night on June 25th and a kids' health and safety fair on July 2nd. Want to say Happy Father's Day to everyone who is or will be a father. Enjoy your day. And also want to invite everyone to a seminar which is entitled Grow Your Business with E-Marketing. This is on June 18th from 9:00 to 10:30, and it's sponsored by the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce, and will be right here in our council chambers. June is National Safety Month, so please remember, safety at work, safety at home, and safety on the road. And also to remember that safety takes all of us to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucker.
I just want to ditto and echo the comments congratulating Debbie Olson and everyone at the LRA and the whole City of Riverbank on this fabulous Base Excellence Award and the success you had with the trip to Washington, D.C. It's certainly wonderful and makes us all very, very proud. I want to just comment with the heat that we are currently experiencing and we will experience throughout the summer, just make sure that we're keeping an eye on our senior citizens, making sure that they, you know, have air conditioning that is working and that they're staying cool and healthy and safe. And that's about all I have.
Thanks, mayor.
Likewise, I think it's great that the award that we got at the ammunition plant, and I also want to compliment all the cleanup that's gone out of that plant in the last six or eight months. It's really been cleaned up quite a bit, and a lot of facilities are being opened up so that more leases can be given to other businesses. River Cove, I've had some other people address me about some of the problems, and I appreciate Mr. Fitter coming and spelling it out so much. I would encourage everyone that we have to work together on this. Spread the word. If people see things happening down there, it's imperative they get ahold of some officials because that's the way that we'll stop it. We have to work together to help prevent this problem. And likewise, I'd like to encourage everybody to keep trying to attend the farmer's market Wednesday night outs. There's lots of things that are going on there, and we need your support to make them work.
Thank you. At the Riverbank Industrial Complex, I had the honor of being at an award given to the Donaldson Division by the president of the Donaldson, Inc. It was for being the most productive, the best division in Donaldson, and that is an international company. And it's very well-deserved for that small division. And they're looking at increasing, so that's a plus out at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. Also want to congratulate all of Riverbanks for the LRA's accomplishments. That was a prestigious award, nationally recognized and locally attained. So, I fully understand your frustrations with the situation. There's either draconian measures that will affect everybody down there that will stop it, or we have to come up with some other solutions. I believe that with budgetary, we can afford it. We can put some more eyes out there. But that's still not going to stop it. Would probably need to take a look at some of the agencies that are involved, Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineer. I don't know, maybe even some public health agencies being down there to see what can be done while down there. But you cannot stop someone's access to the river. This is a benefit for having the river. It's also a, I was going to say a pain, but it's more than a pain. It's a health hazard. Other than that, upcoming events are listed down there. We still are seeking a budget advisory committee member. I believe in, at this budget advisory committee ends, you're probably going to have a vacancy of four members. So, all of you out in TV land or out there in the public wish to participate in affecting how the city monitors and suggests ways on how it expands, please submit your applications. And with that, we're adjourned. Under two hours.
Under two hours.